Or Tom, sorry, 2024, we're a year off. I'd like to inform the public about the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers. This time I'd like to take roll call.
Arms.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Granquist. Hildebrand.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
Mayor.
All right. First item in action would be item number four, recommendation of the general fund revenue budget. And Sheila, that is, you start to kick us off, I guess, so.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is starting on page seven of the agenda packet. The first line is beginning fund balance of just under 9.2 million. This is a 1.1 million increase from last year's budgeted beginning fund balance. So we put the budget together, keeping the property tax amount the same as last year. This is 5,871,514. We got assessed valuation estimates from the county assessor, and he's estimating a 5.34% increase in assessed valuations. So this would result in about a 1.5 cent levy reduction. The prior year levy rate was 29.3 cents, and this would drop to 27.8 cents. Sales tax is budgeted to increase 438,399, or 3.78%. And this is actual sales tax receipts from June 2023 to May 2024, and then adjusted for any large variances or known sales tax refunds. There's just a few minor changes in license and permits. Liquor license increased 6,100. Excavation permits decreased 10,000, and electrical permits increased 20,000. Then on page eight, miscellaneous federal grants decreases 46,195. We were still getting some FEMA grants for COVID last year, and these have since ended. Municipal equalization fund revenue is expected to increase 65,848. And this is based off of estimates provided by the Nebraska Department of Revenue. Administration fees increased 299,133. This increase is partially an increase in administration fees from the enterprise funds. We're no longer budgeting a stormwater specialist in the stormwater fund. And instead, the personnel is budgeted in engineering, and then the stormwater fund will pay the general fund for the work that that engineering does related to stormwater. For the other enterprise funds, the use fees increase, and then this increases the admin fee paid to the general fund. Also, the increase is partially from new housing management fees for Boulevard Village and independent housing. Ambulance charges increases 50,000. This is due to an increase in calls in service and because we're now charging for mileage. Recreation program fees increase 56,000 due to projected ice skating revenue and increased participation in recreation programs. MPPD lease revenue is our third largest revenue source. It's budgeted at estimated receipts for the last 12 months. No rate change is budgeted, so the 71,327, or 1.51% decrease is due to decreased usage. Other interest income increases 25,400. We're budgeting an interest rate of 3%, which is the same that we budgeted last year. So the increase is due to an increase in fund balance. So our total revenues are 29.6 million, which is a 854,000, or 2.97% increase from the prior year. I would be happy to answer any questions on the general fund revenues.
Just going back to that municipal equalization fund revenue, can you explain that again to me, what that was?
So this is, cities get a share from the pot of money at the state, where they're trying to equalize property tax. And so there's a formula that the state does. And so they put out those estimates about this time, a couple of months ago. And so they're estimating that that's going to increase.
And so the 2023, 24, that was just a really low amount, because it looks like the prior years were similar amounts.
Right. That had to do with the annexation and how we annexed a lot of assessed valuation. And so because we had that valuation, it dropped what we got for equalization revenue.
Okay.
But this year, the per capita property tax statewide increased, and then that actually helped us. So it calculates like your resources being your, being the assessed valuation, and then the need is like that per capita. And so it made our need go up, and that's why it increased this year.
So 23, 24 was just kind of an anomaly a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Sheila, I got a question quick on the beginning fund balance. The actual beginning fund balance in 2021, 2022 was 9,343,000. Then we have our actual from last fiscal at 8,480, I guess, 8.4 million. The difference of about 900,000 was that, what payoff was that from?
Yeah, that's when we paid off those bonds related to this building.
For the building, okay, that's good, right, perfect. And then you're estimating an additional 1.3 million this year? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's the primary source of that?
That's primarily because sales tax came in above budget.
Okay. Okay, then can you just run through, I guess the biggest one would be the, our property taxes. In fact, what we saw this year, you talked about it briefly with the assessment values going up, and then what the, what that did to our mill, what it did to our mill levy, and then just focus on that for just a minute, instead of running through that so quickly, I guess.
Sure. So the property tax amount is the same as what was budgeted last year. And that's across, so that's general fund, that's also debt service fund, which we'll get to at the next meeting. And then vehicle parking is, that one changed just slightly, but other than that, we're really looking at the same dollar amount of property tax in the budget. And the county assessor is estimating a 5.34% increase in assessed valuations. So that would drop the levy approximately 1.5 cents. We don't have final valuation, so that could change, you know, either up or down, but it's looking to be about a 1.5 cent levy reduction.
So essentially, what you've done is you essentially set the budget the same as what last year's property tax, like you just explained, right? And then you let them, because of the increase in valuations, instead of recouping those dollars, you just let the mill levy drop to return, to not request those funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, kind of similar to what was done years prior.
Years ago.
Okay, all right, yep, thanks. Oh, one, how much does that amount to, I guess? The amount of that, or not the deduction, but the of not collecting that amount off the assessed values? What would be the difference there, you said that 5.3% increase? By drop, by leaving the actual asks the same and the mill, and the actual assessed values going up? What's the difference in funds?
Right.
I guess it's just approximately.
A 5% increase in the assessed value was going to increase it 344,000.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions on general fund revenue budget? Okay. Everybody comfortable with moving on?
So we will look for a motion to recommend approval of these. This isn't the final approval, obviously, that'll come, if you approve, vote to approve this, this is what will come before you for final approval in September. But for now, so we know if there's any changes that need to be to the budget, if someone would motion a second to recommend approval as presented, or if there's an instance where you wanted some changes, I'd look for that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the general revenue budget as presented.
Perfect, thank you.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Please vote. Do you want to use voice votes?
Nope, I've dialed up on the system, yep, so we're good to go there. Just waiting on two more. One more. All leader here, right, there we go. All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item five, recommendation of the administration budget. And to present that, we'll hear from Sheila. Sheila Prios, go ahead.
So the personnel cost included 2.5% cost of living adjustment. We looked at the Consumer Price Index for March, and it was up 3.5% from the prior March. So it was decided to propose a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. The city clerk position was divided into two positions, an office manager and a city clerk. And there was also restructuring in the HR department. In line 46, building maintenance, we deleted the wallpaper removal and paint for 10,000. That was in the last year's budget, and we replaced it with a refrigerator for 2,500. In line 48, office equipment maintenance, we increased the antivirus 10,000, and we added code recodification for 20,000. In line 53, travel and training, we added staff leadership training for 15,000 and CPR training for 2,000. We cut other areas of the travel and training budget, so it actually decreased 2,540. Line 61, insurance increases 6,472, or 11.59%. And this is based off of what alarm has indicated for increases. Line 64, office supplies increases 5,800. We increased the annual report, printing and mailing 4,000. And the remaining increase is the normal rotation of computers and laptops. In line 68, other professional fees, we added funding to go to the senior citizen center. This is 50,000 that is designated to come from council priority dollars. We also added industrial site planning. This is 10,000, and this will be paid from Keno funds. The special studies decreases 25,000. Last year, we budgeted 85,000 to contract out the ambulance billing. Now that we have a contract for that, we know it will be less than that, so it is decreased to 50,000 this year. Transfers out decreases almost 179,000. Last year, there was a couple of one-time transfers. There was a transfer of 81,500 to the capital projects fund to bury the power lines on Northwestern Avenue. And also, there was an 81,500 transferred to the capital projects fund for Central Park improvements. In capital, we're budgeting 30,000 for a welcome to Norfolk sign, 25,000 for public art, and 15,000 for a furnace AC replacement. And in machinery and equipment, we're budgeting 10,000 for a paper folding machine. This is what we use to fold the water bills. So the total admin expenditures is 5.7 million, and that's basically the same amount that was budgeted last year. It's just a $3,842 increase, or 0.07%. Are there any questions on the admin budget?
I'll, just a comment and a clarification on one aspect. If you look in the budget, we kept the contributions to Norfolk Public Transit the same as it has been. We did get a request from Transit to increase that amount. Now, what they, what they requested, there's two different components to it. The first component is our existing contribution would be increased to $125,000. So that's $25,000 increase. And then there is also a request, a separate one, as they're going to be restarting the flex route service in Norfolk, for forklift, is what I think it was called. So that is an additional $122,000 a year, which is what was requested from us as well. So those amounts were not included in this budget. We wanted to keep that amount the same, to try to keep our bottom line consistent, so to speak. So in looking for some of this, I mean, they have done some fundraising. I know they are planning to do more fundraising. And I think the thought was perhaps, once they're able to do a little bit more of that and show, then they could come back again next year and ask for additional funding, and you can see where we are at that point. But that increase was not budgeted into what you have presented here, so. You don't have to make a decision on that now. That is something we can maybe wrap up next week when we meet on the eighth, if you want some time to digest that a little bit, but that amount was kept the same for Transit.
And what was the overall increase, you said? From what was kept the same and what they're asking?
The base increase they asked for was 125, so a $25,000 increase.
$25,000.
But they're wanting to restart the forklift service, and that was separately an additional 122,000 a year.
Ongoing or request just for this year to get it started?
I would assume it would be ongoing, because that's going to be an ongoing cost. Looks to me that is about $486,000 total annually is what that service costs, is what they're estimating. So I would imagine this is, that would be a consistent one from year to year.
Was there, was there any subcommittee or any council otherwise consideration on that request?
That request just came through email, so no, this did not go to subcommittee.
Do you know if there's any other partnerships involved with this, getting the flex route?
Sure, so the last, the latest and greatest funding contribution budget that I've got is, probably the big ones is Faith Regional, looks like they're at about $25,000. Great Dane for $92,000, but my understanding is that pays for itself, so that's a complete offset for the service they provide to Great Dane. So, and then United Way gives about 21,000, Visitors Bureau about 5,400, and there's some smaller contributions, usually looks like from anywhere from 500 to 1,500 from different agencies throughout town. So total contributions, it looks like, so about $259,000 a year, and we're at about 100,000 of that.
Just for clarification, it almost sounded like you said we're, if we budgeted 100, and we're gonna, if they're gonna request 120. But they, we budgeted 100, but their additional request would be 25.
25.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, plus the, plus the, the, the second part of their request is they want to restart the flex route. So that would be an additional 122,000.
Oh, so that did take it that way? So it'd be, so you're talking about 150K that we're not budgeting for if they were coming to request in front of us? And so if they did come to request those funds, where's those funds going to come from if it's not budgeted in now?
What do you mean?
Yeah, you said they'd come maybe next fiscal, is that what you're thinking?
Next, well, I think.
Because this will be this, this, we're approving this next fiscal now.
Yeah, your question is where would those, it's not budgeted now, so where would they potentially come from if the council decided that it wanted to provide?
It would have to come out of general fund, so some of those numbers that Sheila reviewed would have to be changed. As far as fund balance, property tax and some of those things.
How, how did Transit fall into administration budget and not some other budget?
That's where it's been for, I mean, it predates me, for sure, so Randy can maybe explain why it fell in there.
Basically, if we don't have a good spot to put anything, it gets dumped into admin, so admin kind of gets all the miscellaneous type stuff.
I think, you know, I just make a comment, you know, we, staff tried really hard this year to bring you what I feel is a pretty conservative budget. And I think we tried hitting the marks, you know, some of the messages we've heard from the community and from council members is property tax, that there's some pain going on in Norfolk and the state for that as well. So we tried to be mindful of that. And also just overall trying to make our operations more efficient. And I think with some of the restructures and handling some of those things, we've done that. So we're trying to hit some of those marks with this budget. So any change from that would obviously change the overall picture of the budget if we're going to be spending more money. As far as council priority dollars, which is another one where we typically turn to for these things, the only request that I have budgeted in council priority is for the senior center. And that is one where, months ago, I've heard feedback from council members that there has been an interest in wanting to help the senior center out. And I've had conversations with Cheryl. I've been able to see their budget and have some of those discussions as well. So that is in there for $50,000. There are no other obligations that we've got planned going forward for council priority, with the thought that that will be needed in the event the police department, local option sales tax is approved, we'll have to be able to have some funds to start making payments, so anything we can turn to for that will be helpful. So that's why you won't see a lot of added burdens on council priority in this budget. So essentially, it would come out of somewhere in admin, so we'd have to increase our admin budget, which would then change our revenues as well.
For the time being, the cleanest area to have this conversation in would be during council priority discussion? Council priority.
Yep.
And that is, is that next, is that today or next week?
Do we have a set timeframe for council priority, Randy? I think it's just kind of.
Discussed in the capital projects fund, because that's where we put any undesignated council priority dollars.
We haven't seen a lot of operations coming out of council priority. We stopped some of those ongoing expenses, so you'll see that when it comes to CIP and other project funds.
Well, council priority dollars were freed up as soon as we paid this building off, essentially. You know, that's who was going to pay for the building most of the time, so that's kind of why you see those dollars now. They wouldn't have those before. So I do think it's wise to leave council priority dollars out of the general fund this year because of the police department. And if that hap, if it goes, we have an early way to front end that project, so I think it's wise that you keep those in there and not put a lot of burden on that particular line item. And so let's just talk about the, you know, the main thing, that the main increase here would be the COLA, obviously, the 2.5. So what would be the difference between 2% increase and 2.5% increase? What's the figure there? What's the sum, we're talking about that 0.5, and then? Just a question, just because that's.
Yeah, we'll look that up.
Okay.
In the meantime, on Transit, I think it's worth having further discussion, given that whether it's budget or not, we will likely get the request.
Right.
The request will come. And I think then it's, we should be mindful of, well, how do you handle that or approach it? Councilwoman Webb is our designated council appointee on the Transit Board. I'd be interested in his comments on this, if you have any.
No, I, I, the flex route, I don't know. I would say stick with what Andy's got now and just kind of see what evolves from, what comes from Transit. And I would say what we have proposed here is good, and then if Transit wants to come back to the table and down the road, then we can see what they have to say, but.
Sounds like we already, though, do have a request from them for additional, at least an additional amount for operational, existing operational this year, from 100 to 125. And assume, assume the board approved making that request to the council?
Yeah, if this council wants to entertain that, they can, but I think it's, it's the Transit Board's job is to come and ask for what they think they can get from the council, and I think it's up to the council to decide what they want to do there.
Yeah, so I guess that's my question, because if we don't allow for any budgetary room to accommodate that, then they can ask the question, but the answer is going to be, no, there's no money, right? So we're setting the table before an ask officially has been made, is I guess my concern.
Yeah, if there's a way we can make room for that, in case the council supports it.
Andy, could you elaborate again? What was the additional 25 for? I know the 122 was to start up the flex route.
So the request is going from 100 to 125, so a $25,000 increase is what I would call our base. That's for the existing teller services that they run now today. And so that's the local match for their 5311 funding. That's the $25,000 increase that they're asking for.
Okay.
The extra additional 122,000 is to restart forklift.
Okay, so the 25,000, is this just administration and salaries or cost? What's the reason for the increase?
This is where I think it would be helpful if they were able to come in and make a presentation, make that ask, prior to setting the numbers in stone. So perhaps that's something that could be accommodated next week when we do this.
We can invite them to come in and do a wrap up at the end of the budget meeting on the eighth, or else at any time, we can squeeze them in and invite them in.
Because maybe the 125 is warranted for an increase if it's necessary to put it in the budget. While I do have my microphone hot, though, I am going to ask Randy or Sheila, the arts council, $59,000. So we're actually doing 25,000 yearly, so why does that still say 59 for that?
Yeah, so that 59 was what, way back with the, that CARES funds that we got, and we allocated 59,000. And then there also, the art council is getting 25,000 a year of Keno funds to use on art. Well, they, they've been spending some of that 25,000, and they just never touched the 59,000 yet. Because if they don't use that 25,000, they, they lose it. They don't get to carry that over year to year. So I think that's why they are hanging on to that, but we're going to encourage them to use that 59,000, because. because it's, we don't want to keep carrying that over.
So they've got a fifty-nine thousand beginning balance?
Balance over, and not their annual?
Yeah, because that fifty-nine thousand was from CARES funds, and we said, here, you can have this, you can keep it until you spend it.
Correct.
And they haven't spent any of it, but that twenty-five thousand is, they don't use it in that year, they, they lose it, they don't get to carry that over to the next year, does that make sense?
Yeah, my question, why not just leave the fifty-nine thousand there, give them two years' worth of twenty-five thousand dollar budget, and then take the twenty-five thousand out and use it for transit? I mean, they can, they still have the same amount in there for two years, and then in year three, you start funding back again with twenty-five thousand.
I don't think we can take the twenty-five thousand out of it, i- if it was an ARPA fund and use.
No, no, I'm saying leave the CARES funds in there, and then have that as our budget, what we normally give for two years, they have it there, they haven't spent it, that's two years' worth of funding, right? And then just take that twenty-five K that they're not spending per year for the last two years, I guess.
They, they are spending the twenty-five, they're just not, they're just not spending the fifty-nine balance.
But I'm just looking, why aren't they spending the fifty-nine that's sitting there?
You're saying freeze the twenty-five for this year.
Right, and then we free up twenty-five K, and we can put that towards the transit, and we're, we're even, just a thought, I mean.
Yeah, they, they do have a larger purchase coming up, though, for the, um, uh, the First Street, uh, roundabout, that is gonna be a larger item.
You'd see my train of thought, though, here, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying suspend the arts council twenty-five thousand for two years?
Or even one year, just one year, so we can have, then we can have the twenty-five thousand dollar request from, if we do get a twenty-five thousand dollar request, we've got some flexibility with, uh, transit versus arts, I mean, you could keep, it could be a floating dollar within the budget, and if we decide, if they come in and they're needing that twenty-five thousand, well, then it goes there, if the transit comes in and they need that, you know what I mean, it could be just, then you don't have to increase the budget, cause I think they've worked pretty hard to make, to set the mill levy where it's at, so it's not increasing with the evaluations, property evaluation, I know that's probably been something that they've been.
That's, I mean, I think for one year, maybe that wouldn't be the worst.
And that twenty-five is coming from Keno, correct, so it'd be a Keno transfer, essentially to transit instead of arts council.
Councilman Webb, where is the, financially, where is transit sitting with all the, um, all the reimbursements and, from the state, and that, are, are we back to a new, new budget sheet, are we still looking at some things that have not been re, repaid from the state or from other entities?
Reimbursements are, are starting to come in, I think we still struggle with some of it, um, but they're coming in, they're way more regular than they used to be, um, yeah.
But there was a time when we were, we were annually, we were a year behind.
Yeah, that's, we're not.
I mean, are we somewhat current of ninety days or so now?
I think we're within two or three months, not a hundred percent sure, but they're, they're coming in more regularly than they were before, we're definitely not eight, nine months out like we were before, so, the biggest thing right now is just getting, um, the local match to come in, and maybe Steve can talk more about where we're at on, for as reimbursements go, and what month we're in.
Traditionally, though, your budget's two months behind anyway, cause you have reimbursements coming in, yeah, so sixty days behind.
From my understanding, it's caught up to about as, closest where it can be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, the biggest thing is just getting the local match now, just getting the donations to come in, so. There's a lot of talk of trying to get the cost per ride down, going to minivans, over to the buses, and just keeping the buses we need, and then there's something that we should keep the buses, and just do a few minivans, so those conversations are going on, but.
Have you guys looked into, like, I know you have it broke down, and you, obviously have looked into, cause I've seen it, but who is your biggest user of the, um, you know, the, the buses, and if there'd be an opportunity to talk to some of them? I know, um, when I was running the Oddfellow, the Oddfellow had a lot of stops there from the, um, the bus system, and, and then that was one of the reasons why, when we, when they shut down, we started up a bus, uh, program, just so we could keep people moving around, but I think there'd be some opportunity to talk in, there might be a little bit, I mean, that might, might not be much, but some of those individ, some of those places might be willing, because it does help them, uh, serve the needs of the people that live there, you know, so, might be worth reaching out and asking.
And I, I would assume with conversation of potentially restarting, uh, one of the flex routes, that the biggest users, which I understand, you know, northeast was part of that, the hospital, um, I think they've been a contributor to this, but I, I would be interested to hear from transit, what kind of asks are going to those community partners as well, um, I think we all recognized over the last year and a half, two years, how important this service can be, especially to elderly folks, disabled, those on a fixed income, um, students, uh, so, this to me is one to dig down on a little bit, um, making sure that, that critical service for those communities can be sustained, so, I think that, all that said, it's important probably here, to hear directly from transit.
Right.
As to what they're, where they're at today, what they plan for in the future, how they get there, who else is contributing to, uh, helping sustain the service.
You think it'd also be important to hear from the art council, too, maybe? Frank, I mean, obviously, you've, you've, you've got a better feel on what they're, they ask for per year and what their budget looks like, what do you think would be good to have them, along with the transit, to be here next Monday, to kind of talk to us about what their, if that's even feasible to do what I was talking about, you know, to talk about suspending the payment, just so we could have some mon, money, too?
Right, um, yeah, they could probably elaborate on maybe the upcoming expenses that they're foreseeing this year, I don't, I know the, the fund balance that they've had, it, obviously, they're very cautious on using it for the right, the right thing, so, that's why that has not been spent down.
Mm-hmm.
They're just trying, trying to be frugal with the money, and, and not, and not just use it because it's there, um, I, I do think maybe the, the funding could still go to the council this year, and then if that ask comes, uh, from the transit and it's warranted, you know, maybe we can just make a, a switch on those funds, if that's possible.
Is that possible, cause they're out of Keno?
Since it's both Keno-funded, is that?
Yeah. Keno's a pretty flexible funds.
Okay.
To use for community betterment, so.
I just know that, like, we've taken some heat with other organizations that we donate to that ARPA way with the beginning balance, um, I know Candace, with the economic development, took some pretty good heat from the county with their beginning balance, so I'm wondering sometimes if, when we're, when we're donating and some, helping different organizations with the beginning balance, if that's something that we need to look into, if that's something that's warranted or not.
Yeah, do we really want to actually ear-tag it for the transit, or do we want to just leave where it is and then see if that transit one-twenty-five is, is actually warranted?
I'm good with that mind frame, that we're, it's there, and we know it's there, and, right.
Contractually, what's it say with, uh, with, with transit? We're under a year-to-year contract with no renewal period, except for, it renews on, on the budget, budgetary, if we approve today, right?
I believe that's the case, that our agreement goes, it, it is, it is year-to-year, so our agreement we have is only for whatever was approved last year that they've been given, that's a hundred thousand, so, there would have to be another agreement, it's not an ongoing one, so, the next agreement we approve then would have this, whatever budgeted amount.
So, so either the ask is gonna be a hundred for, a hundred or a hundred-and-twenty-five, so that's how we're gonna have to write our contractual agreement with transit, then?
Correct.
So it's really hard to do anything with this today, if we know this ask is coming?
That's right, yeah, yeah, I, I would suggest, if it, if there's a place to make it make sense and fit it in next week, whether it's special projects, whatever, uh, that would be a time that they could come in and give us an update, we haven't had an update for some time, I think it'd be nice to have an update, anyway, and that ask could be made and then justified at the time, it'd be easier to do it now, correct, than it would be to solidify this budget and then try to rearrange things.
Correct.
Later. Anybody have problems with that, having a brief presentation or update from them?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Next week's budget review session.
So with that, then, do we want to table the administration part of it, instead of?
Um, yeah, I think that's fine, we can table that part of it and then bring it back on July, and then add it to our, whatever.
We don't have, or we want to do, see what makes it easiest?
Just to clarify.
Yeah, we can do that, but before, before you would make any motions to table, then we can't talk about admin anymore, if we're gonna table the admin's budget, so let's, we'll finish the conversation before you make a motion a second to approve the admin budget, we'll just table it to July eighth, and we'll add it to that agenda, and then bring up the conversation again there.
Just to clarify, though, this, this, just, we're, we're not approving the budget, we're just recommending.
No, yeah, right, right, but this is, I mean, this gives, this gives staffs very clear direction on what you guys want in the budget when we bring it back in September.
Creates a framework.
Yes, yep.
We're not passing a budget right now.
Are we going to table it versus approving it with a change next week?
I think it's probably just cleaner to table it.
Probably, yeah, mm-hmm.
Do we have to wait till we go through the rest of this, in case we talk about more stuff in the budget?
Yeah, like I said, yeah, before you make a motion to table, if there's anything else admin related that you want to talk about.
At this point, if that's the direction we want to, uh, take, um, is there any other discussion on any other parts of the admin budget before a motion to table?
I think there was a question on the COLA.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, we're just getting those COLA numbers.
Yeah, I believe in the general fund, going from a two-and-a-half to a two percent COLA would be about eighty-four thousand.
That was at the two percent, Randy?
Yeah, that's between the two percent. That's point-five.
Yeah, point-five, okay.
Do, do you want to talk a little bit more about how that two-and-a-half percent was come to, I know some, there were discussions about evaluating where, uh, that is, anticipating what other peer communities are doing, how, how we ended up landing at that two-and-a-half percent?
Sure, so, back in March, um, that's when the CPI, the cities usually, historically use the CPI to come up with the recommended COLA as a starting point for discussion, that was three-and-a-half percent, um, and so, through just, I guess, for lack of a better term, informal conversations, conversations with council members one-on-one, kind of just trying to explore where everybody kind of sits with the COLAs, I know that's kind of a big issue, and I know, uh, we were planning to talk about that at the work session that was, uh, canceled here, the, the retreat that was, that was gonna happen, um, so, the two-and-a-half percent just came after just discussions and, and kind of seeing where, where council members sat, and, um, knowing that that was gonna come up at this meeting as well, to talk about, but it is about a percent under what we would normally be using as a CPI, which is three-and-a-half percent, so, and then some of the emails that I've received from other cities were probably in that lower range, uh, low-middle range for what other cities are having for COLAs, those mostly are ranging from three to three-and-a-half percent. So, again, wanting to recommend a conservative budget, this is all part of that.
Well, I appreciate that background, I know it was a discussion, it's not always an easy discussion to have, because there's a balance between, um, having respect for that conservative budget, especially given the environment that we're in, and also making sure that we stay competitive, uh, in terms of employee compensation with peer communities, so, it's always a balance, give and take. Are there any other parts of the admin budget?
I, I just have one question, and it has to do with what we've talked about since we've been here, so can I ta, ask that question, just about the mill levy reduction?
Mm-hmm.
You said, cent and a half, is that what you said?
Yes.
What's that, that, that's three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay.
The other discussion on the admin budget?
So that's three years in a row that the mill levy has been decreased?
Three years for sure, Randy, well, this is the last two years before this year, we have, or was it three years before?
The, this would be the third year that our COLA's been less inflation.
May I ask? Mill levy?
Mill levy?
Reduced.
Yes, I think this is the third year.
I think so, too.
Just to be fair, though, this is the first time in a long time, though, that the, the, the actual property tax rate has been set at what we requested last year, or what was requ, what we received last year, and the mill levy just didn't automatically drop because assessments went up, correct, right, so this is, this is a little bit different, this is quite a bit different than we've done in years past, since probably for ten years or so.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think it's maybe even twelve years, it was.
Cause traditionally, we've dropped the mil, we've dropped the mill levy, or we have the last couple of years, but the assessed values that came in on, still were collected, this is the first time I've seen it in a long time, where the, the budget actually
Keeping the property tax amount.
Was set off of the property tax increase from the year before, so, that's something to be stated.
Yeah, looking at, uh, ten-year history, we got in the budget memo, we, this would be the first year in that ten years that we would have kept the same, and that probably goes back a few years before that, at least.
Right, I want to say out-roader timeframe, that's how long it's been, so, right.
The total, so, a cent and a half reduction this year, last year, if memory serves me correct, it was, uh, almost a cent, is that right? I just wonder in the last three years, if it's come down, what that total?
Last year, what?
Cent number is?
Went from thirty-point-four to twenty-nine-point-three, so, been a little bit over a cent, um, yeah, the year before.
Year before, is, I think, that's it. So we're looking, I think about three cents over three years, total reduction, I mean, but yeah, and that's, as Councilman Claussen said, important to note, uh, staff and council did the hard work in making that happen this year, and it's also been made possible by sales tax increases that provide flexibility and cushion, cushion in terms of revenue.
So when it comes to the overall ask, has that been, uh, positive as far as what sales tax looked like, as far as, cause last year, I think we were about twenty percent on, oh, the overall general fund was twenty percent off of property tax, and forty-five percent off of sales tax, have you seen a movement now, or, where property tax that overall has dropped down from twenty percent a little bit this year, and the sales tax is a little bit bigger portion of the city's budget, kind of like it has been seeing in years past, I mean, have you seen a little bit of a, cause that's always something I watch, and you get kind of nervous when all of a sudden it used to be a, a city that was operating about sixty percent on sales tax and five percent on property tax, and you see a fifteen percent swing in the last twelve years, are we seeing it maybe?
Right, it is, I don't have those exact percentages, but.
It would reflect, would reflect the three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. Yeah.
And the year before, it was a point-three cent levy reduction.
Yeah, those numbers are interesting, just looking, I know we're going backwards a little bit here, too, but you look at two thousand twenty, sales tax, nine-point-three million, compared to twenty-four, twenty-five, sales tax receipts, ten-point-nine million, it's a big jump, and those weren't sales tax increases, let's be clear, in the rate, they were sales tax, uh, receipt increases because of business activity. Any other discussion?
Our sales tax is still right around forty percent of our, about forty-point-one, forty-point-six percent, I guess, is what I calculate that sales tax is, the general fund budget in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
And there's other factors related to that, the MPPD lease, which is another big chunk of our budget, has not changed, those rates have stayed the same. And there's other factors related to that, the MPPD lease, which is another big chunk of our budget, has not changed, those rates have stayed the same. Any further questions or discussion on admin budget prior to a table motion?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we table.
I'm going to abstain from the vote, just being on the transit board and.
Motion second to table, please vote. Table to next week's budget review session.
Voting in the affirmative. McCarthy, Granquist, Arnz, Snorton, Hildebrand, Clausen, Murin abstaining, web motion to table the administration budget carries.
Okay, item six, recommendation of the engineering budget. Mr. Ramus, please.
Mayor and council, my pleasure to present to you this afternoon the engineering budget for fiscal year twenty-four or fiscal year twenty-five. I'll start off with the, I'm sure you all saw the significant increase in engineering and Sheila kind of alluded to it here a little bit ago, that one of the things we've done now is our stormwater coordinator left us in, in January and so that position has been vacant for a little bit and we've been managing that through the engineering department as we historically did prior to that position existing. But as we were going through the budget process, the very first series of budgets we prepared were the way they've been the last couple of years with the stormwater manager funded under the stormwater budget and the engineering department would have reflected what was done last year. And what I would say is, in that process of just updating last year's budget to this year's numbers, the engineering budget went up twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars or three point three eight percent. After I had prepared that, we had some conversations around how we were gonna manage that stormwater position and how we were gonna fill that and we made a decision to, because we've also been short a position in the engineering office, that, a full-time position and we've been backfilling that full-time position in the engineering office with part-time staff and some co, some intern staff. What we decided to do was that the stormwater role would be through, you know, we could do that through the engineering department, that bringing on one staff that's about forty percent engineering, sixty percent stormwater and that person would be, would show up under the engineering budget and we transfer the dollars out of the stormwater budget over to general fund then to fund, fund that position in engineering. And so ultimately, as we talked through that, we made that decision and moved that forward and so I'll kind of explain that. What you see here is a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar, a hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollar increase. Twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars would reflect, of that would reflect the increase in last year's engineering budget to this year's, just carrying forward last year's budget. Ninety thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars of this, of this hundred and ninety-one, hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar increase, ninety thousand three hundred and forty-two is the stormwater manager position that's being transferred, transferred over. That leaves seven hundred, or seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars then to describe and the only way I can describe that is that is, in, in a desire to just be transparent with staff and budget and how that's all, how that's all going, there's seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars of overlap between the joint position, that, that engineering slash stormwater position and the existing part-time staff that we would have on staff right now. So all that is budgeted, as we would bring on, and we don't know when we're gonna hire this full-time position. Could be January, it could be next, next May. We're pretty confident it's gonna be sometime during this budget, this fiscal budget. And so what you see in here is you see a little, you see some duplication between the part-time staff that we have and this future full-time staff, so that's seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three is just that duplication. Now, ultimately, when we would pull the trigger and, and hire this full-time position, we would, we would cut back on our part-time staff and that, you know, that seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars would go away. So it's just a matter of being, you know, we were just trying to be very transparent in terms of the, the positions that existed that aren't full and how we're currently filling those, you know, and it's part-time staff, as we would bring in this full-time staff person, we would reduce our part-time staff. But currently, you know, this budget says we don't know when that would be, so they're both listed. But again, to break down that hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six would reflect, just bringing last year's budget forward to this year, that was, that would be our increase. Again, moving the, the stormwater position into the engineering budget, there's ninety thousand three hundred and forty-two there and again, those dollars would be transferred into the general fund to fund that. And then seven, seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three in overlap. I'm gonna stop there and ask questions, just to kinda clarify, clarify that as best I can for you, so.
Can you clarify how you transfer ninety thousand dollars over to the general fund from stormwater sewer's budget? I thought that was, you know, you, you don't cross.
Sheila, you wanna answer that?
I know we've, we've done that, I think maybe last year it happened, but I'm not, how you transfer those funds? You can do that with personnel?
Are you asking how we come up with that amount?
Well, no, you have the ninety thousand that you're transferring over from, I'm assuming from sewer water or stormwater? And, uh, how exactly are we coming about that, able to do that transfer?
So, yeah, it's in the account sixty-eight, that, here Randy's bringing it up right here. Oh, I guess this is.
You'd have to look at stormwater.
It would be in stormwater, yeah, we're looking at engineering here, but in stormwater, it's in that account sixty-eight and then it gets transferred to the general fund under administration fees.
Okay, would it be easier to not have to transfer the funds and just have the person employed? Yeah, or was it easier to just employ the person under engineering, I'm just asking?
When, when we first looked at it, the conversation was, we're gonna have this position and can I just assign forty percent of that position to the engineering budget and sixty percent to the stormwater budget? And as staff chewed through that conversation, it seemed to be a better just to move, do a transfer and transfer over the ninety thousand dollars, you know, to general fund and then use that to fund the engineering.
Because they'll be tracking exact hours that they're spending on stormwater and then we'll transfer that exact amount. Whereas when we were budgeting, it was, well, we think it's gonna be sixty percent engineering, forty percent stormwater or vice versa. And then through payroll, it would get paid that way, but those hours could be different, so we thought it would be easier to budget it in engineering and then just transfer over the exact amount.
And that's why that stormwater management transfer that's in the general fund increased so much.
Any, any other questions on that? If we can certainly come back.
I do have one question and I, and I hope I'm not stepping in the administration veil here, but why is engineering not listed under the personnel roster? Just kinda curious more than anything.
Why are we not listing a personnel roster?
Or, or how are you listed? I, I just don't see it, I was referring to page thirty-four. And I, I just didn't know why it was.
You mean listed by name?
Or, or am I just missing the engineering? Page thirty-three, thirty-four. I'm just looking at the administration, the personnel roster. Well, I didn't wanna go there. It was just a question more than.
Yeah, and it's about what position being listed?
Well, because I didn't know if we would actually have any roster changes to the personnel, if we actually added someone, but I, I just don't even see engineering listed as a, as a line item.
Under admin? Well, it's, it's the dollars, it's the dollars that transferred to admin to fund engineering.
No, I get the dollars.
The position shows up under, under engineering.
Yeah, and the dollars are in the general fund.
Okay, so it's not, engineering's not part of administration.
The, the funds get transferred over from the utility fund or the stormwater utility fund to the general fund, so that would be reflected on the.
I get that, what I, where I guess where I'm, sorry, where I'm confused was engineering's not part of administration, you, you have your own.
Correct.
Correct. Sorry.
And if, if there's other questions, then we can certainly circle back to that. I'll kinda just go down the, go down the remaining portions of the budget here and, and talk about some of the major increases or decreases. Vehicle fuel and lubricants up eleven point three percent just based on projected fuel and, fuel and lubricant, cost of fuel and lubricant. Number forty-eight, office machinery and equipment, number, account forty-eight. The, probably the biggest, a couple of things here. And I'll, I'll go down through them. The GIS software and hardware maintenance, last year that was listed at six thousand dollars, that is now combined with the ESRI license. We combined two lines into one line in the, in the new budget, so the ESRI licenses at six thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Last year's budget was two hundred dollars. Again, we've just combined those two items here and under this budget. We have a, a line item for document scanning and that went to ten thousand this year. We did not spend any of that last year, we did not do any document scanning, but we were, we are actively engaged in a conversation about scanning some of our archives, a substantial portion of those kinda behind this wall here. And so we increased that budget to ten thousand dollars this year for scanning purposes. Asset management annual fees as we bring on our asset management system, engineering is part of that and we'll have an annual fee associated with that. Our, our Blue Beam software, Blue Beam is basically, think of that as a, as a very smart PDF software for reading and working inside PDFs. It allows our engineering team to interactively work on documents, reviewing Platts, reviewing plans. We can all be in the project at the same time and be doing our, our reviews, making our comments and we can see each other's reviews and comments and comment on other people's comments, so it's just a, again, in terms of trying to be as efficient as we can with staff and staff time, we've increased, increasing our use of the Blue Beam core, Blue Beam system. Payment management software, the very bottom line, that has been historically listed under account sixty-eight. We've moved that up to account forty-eight, so you're seeing that fifty-eight hundred dollar add here and further down you'll see that reduced or deleted out of sixty-eight account. Travel and training, slight increase in that just based on potentially some new staff and getting staff to necessary training. You can see historically, I guess on this particular sheet, you don't see that. Historically, we don't get to all the training that we, that we list here, we probably get to about half of that training. But we do, we do list it all, all the potential training we could get to. Let's see, insurance, that seventeen percent, although it's a fairly substantial percent increase, a small dollar, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Again, that comes to us as recommendations from alarm. Office supplies, small increase in office supplies, I will touch, I did make a note on that, just to touch base on that. Professional fees, office supplies, CAD. As a recommendation from our IT department, we struggle with some of the, the part-time staff getting the right, right computer in front of them or an adequate computer in front of them, so recommending that we, we pick up a laptop or tablet for, for their use, so that's the major increase there. Other professional fees, I'll just run through the professional fees, that's a decrease of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in account sixty-eight. We've had some community wayfinding design in there, we do have the design ready for us to implement, so we can implement that as desired. Small increase in GIS mapping, small decrease. The payment condition update, we do have a contract on the tonight's agenda and would be intending to pull the trigger on that, so that is dropping off. We did add general consultant services. Occasionally, things come up, we don't have any, any specific project to put it in. And so it's just kinda, it's a placeholder there for us and then our annual bridge inspections. Capital outlay, account eighty. That was a decrease as well this year. We went from a thirty, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollar budget last year to a ten thousand dollar budget this year. Some materials testing equipment for, for staff. The fourteen thousand five hundred in asset management, we did not get all the way through the asset management implementation this year, so there's about a fifty percent configuration will occur in the next budget for five thousand and we dropped the office furniture line. Pretty, pretty straightforward, any questions?
I got a couple, Steve. It's not a huge cost thing, but Blue Beam, you had five seats last year, you got seven seats this year, but you only got six employees listed. Why would we need seven if we only have a possibility of six? I guess you got six point six three, I'm sorry, which I just don't necessarily understand either.
Yeah, I would, I mean, that, that's, I would say that's the answer to the question is, we have six and a half. We have seven, we'd have seven users potentially on the system, again, we don't, if we don't need it, we don't buy it, so I wouldn't buy seven if I didn't have seven users.
Right.
I wouldn't license seven.
But it's, from my understanding of Blue Beam, we have it at work also, but it's, you don't need it per, do you? I mean, if you have five on, if you have five licenses, you can only use five at one time, or, you know what I mean? So would you actually anticipate having seven people on at the same time?
I'd have to ask Brad that question. I'm not sure, I don't know if it's a pooled license or an individual seat.
So it's similar to TECLA or something like that, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, the Blue Beam licensing this year actually is moving to a subscription-based. We were on a perpetual version before where it did have that floating license count, so you have to license each individual person now.
Okay.
You'll probably see that come in here soon too.
Luckily, I don't have to deal with it, but yeah. Training. Where you talked about typically, I think was how it was answered, you use, typically you only use about half of it, why do we keep? Why do we keep it in the budget if we only typically only do half of it? Why do we keep it in the budget if we only typically only do half of it?
Well, we list out, it's just, it's the way we construct the budget. We list out all the different potential training activities that staff could go to. And that's, that's what that adds up to. Just other projects and things, just depending on what's going on and staff's ability to get away, they may not go to training. We'd like to get them to more of the training that we're, that we're setting them up for. And even rotate that a little bit on an annual basis, but it's just historically, you know, we're only able to get to about fifty percent of it.
I guess my thought going forward is we should probably budget less if we only make it to fifty percent. We should probably look at cutting that back some to be more realistic of what we usually do. And then my last question, I think, is, is more on the lines of the point six three again. And I know you hit on that, but I'm somewhat lost on the dollar amounts and how that works with who we have as proposed. Working in engineering, and then I don't necessarily see part-time staff in here and where that falls.
So, right now, we've listed all the staff and so they all show. So you're talking about the six and a quarter?
Six, six point six three, but like I said.
The six point six three total staff would represent, uh, it does not represent our intern. Or there's, in the budget, there's an intern in there for, uh, thirty-seven, three fifteen. And then there's a part-time staff line item in there at eighteen, ten forty. So, um, the, the lines in the back don't reflect that staff. The lines in the back here reflect, I'm not going to say full-time staff, but generally this is full-time staff with one exception in there. That project engineer is a sixty percent staff person.
So the increase in?
But the reason that position's there is that is part of the shared position between, what we would look at is this full-time position that's currently being handled through part-time staff. So as we would bring on in this list here, this engineer slash construction manager that's currently vacant, as that position would come onboard, that existing project engineer sixty percent time would go away.
So if, using that as a percentage base, sixty-three percent of that person's wages is to engineering and, am I thinking correctly? And thirty-seven percent's going to go to a different?
Right, now that, so that particular, that particular seat is a, just a part-time engineering-funded position. It's the engineer slash construction manager that would be forty percent engineering, sixty percent stormwater. But as that position, you know, as we would fill that position, that sixty percent project engineer position would go away. I just can't tell you when that's going to happen. And most likely it's going to happen in the mid, middle of a budget cycle. And so this budget, the way it's constructed night, right now reflects some overlap in there that wouldn't be paid out. And that's about, of that hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollar increase, that's about just shy of seventy-five thousand. Is duplication between that position and that vacant full-time position. It's difficult to see.
Yeah, I'm just. I feel like numbers are flying through my head here. I'm just trying to put it all together. Thanks, Steve.
Steve, can you explain that hundred in salary and wages again? Will you explain that hundred sixty-four thousand, seven forty-four, what that number is? Will you break that down for me?
Where's that at, councilman?
Uh, page thirty-five. Showing the hundred ninety-three thousand budget increase.
That hundred ninety-three?
Yeah, what's that one sixty-four, seventy-four, seven forty-four? What's that? Can you break that number down?
That number is the increase in actual wages for the staff that's listed. And, and again, in last year's budget, that construction, that, that engineer, construction engineer position was not in there. So we've added that this year because we're most likely going to pull the trigger and hire that person.
So that'd be about ninety thousand of that, ninety-three thousand, as you say?
I can tell you exactly what that is. That is seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars out of that. The, let's look at it prior to, prior to the calisthenics of moving over the stormwater position. That number was fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. As we went in there and did that shift on the stormwater side and brought in the storms, stormwater side and created that new position and put that new position in engineering, sixty percent of that new position in engineering is stor, is being funded through stormwater. The other forty percent is being funded through general funds that are allocated to engineering. But that forty percent funding that's going into that position is currently being consumed by some part-time positions. And so as we would pull the trigger and hire that staff, that new full-time staff, those part-time staff would transition out. The only way we would, you know, in theory, spend that seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three is if on October one, we brought in a new position and we didn't lay off some part-time staff and kept both the part-time staff all the way through fiscal year twenty-five. And we had this new position on staff all the way through fiscal year twenty-five. The reality is that that full-time position probably won't be seen until May or June of next year. And so that's, that's, that's where that seventy-four thousand, although it shows up in the budget, it's dollars that are never going to be spent.
Where was the stormwater position beforehand, placed before this budget season?
It was inside the stormwater budget.
Any other questions or discussion on engineering? Yeah, any input on this?
Jim McKenzie, I, I guess I'm confused by why we would include the part-time position and the full-time position even though we're not going to pay both of them. It would seem to make more sense that you would include the full-time position, the higher amount in your budget and just leave that amount in the budget and then pay the part-time position out of that amount until you hired that full-time position. Otherwise, you're inflating the overall city budget by seventy-five thousand dollars. It's never going to be spent.
And historically, Jim, that's what we've done. We just felt there was a desire to try and understand how full-time staff, part-time staff was being managed and where, how that was fitting into the budget. And so when we peeled out, when we did that, and all of a sudden the part, the full-time position disappeared. And, and you've been a city employee in the, in the past. And so it's not necessarily easy to get a full-time position funded. Uh, you know, that's a, a longer conversation. So the feeling was rather than just, you know, leave, put, put a full-time position in there and then hire part-time staff using those dollars, we would be more transparent in this fashion. And try and show, you know, show that there is a full-time position listed. Here's the part-time staff that, that were currently, you know, they're currently butts in seats and we're paying those bills. We're paying them to, for a service, for their time. And so we've built them into the budget, but yet we're showing that, that, you know, there's still this vacant full-time position out here. And I, I agree it's, you know, in theory, it looks like we're consuming seventy-five thousand dollars more here in this budget. And, and we're not. And I can, I can go back and reconstruct it, you know, like we have historically done, which is what you're saying. And just show those part-time positions in there. That full-time position would drop off the list and, and all of the dollars associated with that. And then we would be back down to, oh, we'd be back down to about a hundred and, hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was suggesting is put the full-time position in there. And even though you're not going to fill it, you'll pay the part-time positions out of that full-time amount.
Right.
And that will reduce your budget by the seventy-five thousand dollars that you're not going to spend. I mean, that, to me, that makes more sense in a budgetary process. Thank you.
So what Jim is describing is historically kind of what, what we've done. It's just, uh, just how you want to see it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll just bring up one thing. And I think what Jim's talking about, what Steve's talking about, and the way I guess I understood was there could be some overlap of positions, whether that's part-time, full-time, and when a person would be hired on. So it's, yeah, it could be seventy-five, but it also could be ten. We don't necessarily know, which makes it difficult. I see where he coming from, but, um, I guess if it's unused, it goes towards general fund at the end of the day.
And, and you're correct, but, um, it just depends on when you hire him, you know, what that overlap could be. I know it's not going to be seventy-four. Could there be a five, ten, fifteen thousand dollar overlap? Why if one's coming on and the other, you know, our part-time's transitioning out, absolutely. That, that's a small variation that just could, generally can be consumed by the budget because we, we don't always, you know, we rarely ever spend all of our budget. I think this year we're looking at, um, we had a budget of one million, forty-nine thousand. We anticipate coming in at one million, thirty-two thousand. So, um, you know, there's always, there's usually some room in the budget to consume some. If there's some direction there from council on, on one way or another.
I don't know that I have one on that particular topic, just the training one that I thought needed to be looked at a little closer and budgeted closer. I don't know if it's, it, basically budget, budgeting right now for the beginning balance, essentially. You know, so I don't know what, I mean, I get what you're saying too, though. But if we typically only use fifty percent, we should probably budget closer to fifty percent, not a hundred percent. Well, your hundred, ask is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more than what you would have been budgeting last year. So I mean, that's a big difference, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand versus a hundred thousand. You know, is it, and so is that just to help boost, is that just the beginning balance ask? That's where it's like, I think that's kind of where.
Okay, anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to recommend?
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering budget.
Second.
Motion and second. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that moves us to recommendation of the street budget. For this, we'll hear from, wait, Will. Our streets director. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So the, starting out there where the wages are, some of this in the past, and I think it got missed last year and, and the, uh, what they were, the summer help was getting paid, got missed as well. So that's all up to date this year. When, uh, annexation happened, um, you know, it was tossed around to get more full-time employees to take that on, whatever it was going to take. And so far, we've done that a lot with just our part-time help. So we upped that from two part-time help to four part-time help. And then with that, you can see where it reflected from where it was last year to this year, between their wages and how many are there. We had a couple guys retired that have, had asked to come back. And so they're paid a little more than two of our part-time help that are college kids that are running the equipment that they were running when they left. So that's all updated in this year's budget to reflect that. And so instead of asking for a full-time person, we're, I think we were wanting to see how the winter months would go pushing snow and stuff. And so far, it's, seems to be working out this way. Uh, two of the guys, since they're not in college, are there closer to that six months, seven months probably. You know, they get, they, more or less when winter comes around, they're, you know, they're done. And then it's just the full-time employees take it from there. But then they're able in the spring to start earlier than the college guys are too. So that's where a lot of that's reflected on that, um, for the whole thing, well, the, what was it, five point five, or twelve point nine five on that? The overall is eight point eight for that. So if I remember right, when I was putting the figures together, I think it ended up being like an eighty-some thousand dollar increase on part-time help between the overtime they may put in and the, and their wage. So that raised that more than normal for this year. Did that make sense where I met on that, I guess? Just kind of a lot there. The operating supplies and materials, um, the vehicle lube and, uh, fuel, that's up to nine point five, and that's just for updated costs of what they're predicting that will cost this year. Road maintenance materials and supplies up five point eight. And that's mainly updated costs there just for what we're running this year from the hot mix to concrete. All the supplies, gravel, you name it, that comes out of there. And then, uh, minor tool and apparatus is just supplies that we get throughout the year. Seems like that's creeped up every year, so we upped that seventeen hundred dollars to help cover some of the cost on that. Down on other operating costs, the rent is lower nineteen percent. The vac truck we have in there for three months out of the year. And that's, um, we put it in for two next year. We're starting to get through the storm system pretty well. We didn't know where we were at when we started. Beginning to take us around five years to get through it. We're on year three, year three. And the time we're done, uh, this fall, we're thinking, that might even lower to one month next year. But it looks like we're going to make our five-year goal on getting through those. Garbage fees, that's lowered twenty-six percent. That's, uh, a lot of that's because we're out of the area of the old part of town and the newer part of town doesn't have the roots that are near the debris in it. So our garbage costs went down getting rid of that material and we hauled it down to WPC. The contracts, no removal is up. But our overall from last- The contracts, no removal is up, but our overall from last year, we're down two point six two. Some of that's just based off what we had this last year with cleaning, mainly how we cleaned downtown and getting the snow hauled away. And then we got hit pretty hard there, that two, three weeks in January when that storm happened. So they helped us a lot. We were down a mechanic last winter, and so they helped us load snow out in the nights too, to help cover that. So that, that helped drive that up or made it drive that up some too. But now that we're fully staffed there, I think that'll help out as well. Utility and maintenance, most of them are all down, and overall, we're down five point three eight. But electricity, some of that is, we were paying some electric bills out of our budget that really weren't ours. We went just the way it's all set up and figured it out, that I think that's helped lower that. The same with the gas, we were paying for some buildings out of our budget that we weren't using. Streetlight maintenance, we've been working on bringing that down. Each year we've been, we've had surplus money there, but I think some of that might be all the LED lighting that they've put in over the last couple of years. So we gradually just lower that slowly, so if we don't see some big surprise, then it sends us the other way. But that's why you see another decrease on that of eight point one oh. Let's see, where are we at?
Will, on that, are we all, are we pretty much all converted LED on streetlights?
As far as I know for now, Steve, aren't we, for what they were going to do on the corridors and stuff?
So everything, it's every street, okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
The building ground and maintenance, that's down seven point six percent. We still got some updates to do, but some of this bigger stuff, I think, is done. It's just, there's still stuff in there for mailbox and stuff that comes out of that if they get hit, light poles that get hit from accidents. There's a couple others in there that we would pull out of there too. Brine tank pump. We are needing to replace the sewer line that drains that office facility, the north building. All that runs through there. Right now, it runs to Michigan, and that line is sagging, and we're, that's plugging on us. We'll try to do the work internal, but for supplies and stuff and that, we'll have to reroute that and take it to Ninth Street. I think we can do it internally, it's just coming up with the time to do it. So that's, that's what that supplies are in there. But overall, it's down. The office, the equipment and maintenance, that one is up thirty-three percent. And then most of that is with the new software coming on, we need to have, all the, street staff needs to have Office 365, and some of them need to have Esri. So that's offsetting some of the costs there to pay for that. But overall, we're still down in that. We're up in the legislative affairs, the biggest one's probably training. The, we, with adding the software, we have an individual need to go to the training on that asset management that we've been working through. The last couple of years, we've been able to send them. Thought we were pretty in the budget just for new things that happen there to work familiar with all of it and just additional training on it. We also have a couple in there for equipment trainers to go to training on running the sweepers now that we'll have two of them the same. Get them out there to make sure they're getting everything done for maintenance and operating correctly with those. And then other administration and overhead. The big one probably on there that's driving that up is the radio maintenance for the radios that are in the trucks and the handhelds. Never really knew where that set at, and so we broke that down this year. We fleet and streets was still together from back when that all happened, when they got the radios. Didn't really know the true cost of that and broke that down this year. And so that raises that line, I'm seventy-two hundred, and that's a, once a year, that bill is like fifteen thousand dollars or something. So that was to offset that so that we're covering it in the budget. And then we've changed fleets to make that correct with what they have over in that building. Office supplies is down, but we had a computer replacement on there last year. And then the capital outlay this year, it's down forty-four percent. I think we have an RRFB in there, if I remember right. Part of the license that, for the software that's still be, being in, to go live, like what Steve had on his. What else we have in there? I believe a replacement one more that we use for mowing forfeit lots and different parts of the right of way that we still mow within our stuff. And then a laser for ditching, just the one we have is outdated. We've sent it in three, four times, and it's just, some of you can't get parts for anymore, so it's just to get that updated. So with that, our overall budget, I think, is five percent or something, I don't remember what we're at here, five, yeah, right at five percent increase from last year. Have any questions?
I got a quick one. So your overall budget increase was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand roughly, but a hundred and seventy-six thousand when that was, that was personnel. So you've got two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for capital as, as an increase from the year before. So you had, you basically essentially cut as much as you could to accommodate the personnel?
Correct.
Pretty much, okay.
Yeah, and a lot of that was, a lot of that took, like I said, was the part-time help just, you know, we didn't really know how far away, out of whack we were on that until I got to, some of it, I was new to the budgeting process, how you do it here. So that was some that I overlooked. And then just what we were needing to get some of that work done to make the crews, you know, just like trying to get the contract help this year on some of the other stuff. It just made more sense to go that way than try to get full-time employees and pay the benefits.
So the biggest cut was the part-time staff, like on your budget, you've got like, I'm just kind of going through here, some major, it's pretty good decreases to get to that hundred and seventy-six thousand.
I think I'm pretty comfortable we can still get everything done that we have.
Your capital out, pretty much a lot of it's a capital outlay, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, correct. And some of that, you know, was catching up with snow removal equipment and stuff to get us caught up for what we could do for moving and stuff, is what the last couple of years had been in ass on that.
Right.
So, yeah, so that cut that about in half. And I think last year was cut in half from the year before even, maybe.
So, Will, some of that was naturally going to level out?
Yep.
Given that you're bringing on the resources needed to do the job. And I, I think you can tell, I think the maintenance work and practices have improved dramatically under your direction. And that was a question I was going to have, yeah, making room to boost manpower, but still having the right equipment and resources in place to do the job. You feel comfortable with where you're at?
I, I think so, and, you know, we give credit to Matt too, just, you know, he does the day-to-day with them, and I think just the way he's, you know, preparing the day for them, or still officially, I think, getting stuff done, officially as we can. I mean, there's always room for improvement on everything you do, but I think we're doing, with what we're proposing here, I think this will still get us to what we're doing like today and maybe a little more.
Well, I do have a couple of questions for you. So underneath the other supplies and materials, I noticed that your, your yellow paint, white paint, all those gallons went down, and that's because we hired the street signage?
Yeah, that is, and some of, some of that also, when we were doing it, we were over on gallons, you know, from year to year. For this budget though, we thought, we'll see where that goes, hoping next year we don't have to, you know, ping in all those, and then that may change the following year. But that is, we still do, the reason it's in there, we still have to do a bunch of ped crossing stuff that's not in that.
In that contract.
Around a bunch of the schools and other streets.
So then the other question I had, and I don't know if this is streets or streets and parks, but we did do a contract to outsource some median mowing. So, I mean, your gallons, fuel gallons are the same. Where is that reflected, the savings that we get out of those, that hired contract?
Mainly in manpower with the guy in the mower, or just, he's still, to be honest, with the rain we've had this year, he's been in the mower just as much as he was the year before, just to keep up with it.
Even though we're outsourcing the contract?
Yeah, where last year, we weren't getting around fast enough, and we were getting complaints. This year, we're able to get him there, and if it would dry up, then he'll go on just on another crew, is what we were hoping to do more. But with the rain we've had this year, that hasn't been the case so far.
So we really don't have too much of a cost savings with that contract, it's just supplemental work?
Yeah, just keeping us up to where we should be, the way our ordinance and stuff reads in the city.
Will, I got, I got one question, maybe this is more clarification than anything, but it says accident repair to streetlights.
Yep.
Is, does, does the person that backed in, drove into the streetlights, do they not, does their insurance not pick that up, or, or is this for the uninsured motorists?
Well, that, and you'd be surprised how many get hit that, nobody, you don't even know.
Okay.
So, you know, they're, all of a sudden, they're on the ground, and then it gets stuck back on the street department to pay for them.
But if there's any opportunity to recover that from the individual causes, pursue that as much as we can.
Okay.
But there's a surprising amount of signs, stoplights, or not stoplights, but traffic lights that get hit throughout the community.
Okay.
Hey, Will, one question for you too. Do you, I know you won't know this till next fiscal, but do you think not doing the street breaks for our plumbers is going to be a significant reduction in your budget or not?
I don't know if it'll be a reduction as much as it'll, we're hoping it gives us more time on the street with our crews doing the concrete repairs and the pothole repairs. We hadn't had a lot here till about, I don't know, last three weeks, all of a sudden the phone just went crazy, and we're still getting that fair amount, and they understand what's going on and what our next steps are. But there's always going to be those certain ones that are going to cause, and so we don't know. And, you know, hopefully, at least if we are getting called, you know, we're recouping what it's costing us to do that where before we, we weren't.
Right, well, it's cool, I'm a little bit off subject asking you that, but would you say, do you do quite a few a year, what you did, or?
Uh, it depends on the year, like the, the first year I was here, as cold as it got, and we didn't have any snow, we did a lot of them. Watering breaks, sewer line breaks, you know, so on and so forth. Last year, when we got the snow and it covered and it stayed warmer, we did hardly do any through the winter last year.
I'm talking for like when the contractors call and need one broke, or need a street break so they can get to this.
Like this, now this, like I said, this last month has been really busy. I know we got some more calling again, and they're, they're just not simple ones, they need to break it in three, four places, you know, to rehook or whatever they're doing if they're tearing one out and putting a new one in or whatever that is. But, or there's new buildings being put up. We had a double one over on Phillip the other day. So you just, you know, you don't know, but.
Yeah, it would be something to look into, monitor this year, because I've gotten a lot of complaints on that, just plumbers basically.
Yeah.
Because they're struggling because they have a hard time finding contractors coming to coordinate it. It's tough to coordinate for them, I guess, lack of better words.
Right.
So if that's something we could look into to see if it's worth the, or if it, from what I'm hearing out there, is that you could charge back and, you know, cover your costs. I know you don't want to express the time that it takes, the manpower that does do it, but they're just, it's, it's hard for those guys to find somebody to patch a ten by ten.
And that's the first thing they told us when we did it, but we're the only community that does it this way too. So whenever they go out of Norfolk, they're having to schedule it as well.
That's true, yeah, you're right on that, yeah.
We, we checked that all out when we went to this, and that was the first thing they said, but Columbus and all them are making them do it.
Yeah, I know, yeah, you're right.
So.
On the same side of things, I've seen where you've got, you know, where they, they at, like in Columbus, they've had, they've got some stuff that's not done properly.
Yeah.
You know, and had to come back and fix, and so, and on a, on a side note, when you guys do it, it's getting put back the way you want it done, and.
And the ones that are using somebody now, because there is a few that are, the individual they have doing it, and it's mainly the one individual, he's done a lot of concrete work, and we're expecting it before he does it as well to make sure it's getting put back right. And so his stuff's all turned out really well. But that, that is one thing that we want to know who's doing it, so that we know what's going on with that. We don't have that, so.
Sam, I think there's a good opportunity for Will on his budget. He updated me on a very, very important metric that they track, and that's pothole repair requests. Will, you want to just kind of give us some update on your list of pothole requests and where that is, up, down?
Well, yeah, there's, I mean, there's always going to be potholes, but our, as far as our e-gubs and complaints that way, compared to where we were when we first started using hot mix, is pretty much down to very, very few calls. I mean, we know they're out there, and we're just headed to places more now that we know where they are, and we're getting them fixed where before it was all complaint-based. That's, you know, been a huge goal for us from what they were, and a lot of that's just because when it rains, the cold mix isn't flying back out, and you're out sweeping it up and redoing them again with cold mix. So, like I said, it's, there's always going to be some somewhere, but at least we're not just chasing all over town, you know, from one end to the other to fill a pothole on complaints. So we're headed in the right direction. It's just, you know, next spring could be different again. This year was Thirteenth Street. We hope that that holds together better with all the hot mix we've put in it and not knowing when that'll get redone. But we're starting to finally see that curve go the other way at least for us, which is a huge goal, so.
You brought up Thirteenth Street. When is that scheduled for the, for the state to do that?
I don't know, you know, it's moved a few times. We were told the signals.
Maybe we should call DOT in to answer that question.
But I, you know, this year, they were supposedly going out for bid for their lights, so that would happen this year, this fall. I just heard last week that that now pushed to next year. So I don't know if they're doing the same thing with the overlays or not. I honestly don't know, it just changes.
We, the, the answer we understand is it's intended to be a bid and awarded in fiscal year twenty-five, which starts July one. So sometime over the next twelve months, they're supposed to bid, bid that overlay.
Which, for the record, we made an appeal to our state senator and Department of Transportation leadership earlier this year, or late last year, to advance the timeline as much as possible on that project given its condition. Well, I'm not surprised to hear that the number of pothole concerns has come down. I think that speaks a lot to the level of attention and detail you and your team has put into this. It's, it's notable, it's, it's noticed. I know there's a lot of work out there, and it's hard to keep up on, but I do commend the proactivity and getting to where you can get and making sure it's addressed as, as timely as possible. So I appreciate that. Any other questions on this budget item or discussion? Okay, any input? Right, hearing none, thank you, Will. Do I hear a motion to move forward then?
I'll make a motion to approve the street maintenance budget.
Second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item eight, let's hear the recommendation for the fleet budget, and that comes from Will as well.
Okay, so this one, the overall is a decrease from last year, one point six two percent. For salaries, it's actually a decrease, and that's to a couple tenure employees retiring and then hiring new, so that whole, most of that'll drop and end up being a point four three percent increase when it comes to personnel costs. The tool, the, so the, the big one on the operating and supplies, the five thousand dollar decrease when it comes to the minor tool and apparatus. We had a one-time purchase of that hydraulic crimping machine last year, so that was purchased and being in use at the facility now. If you go down to utility and maintenance, the forty-six is the increase there, and that's I think the, some of it's due to just supplies. Can't remember them all. So it'd be for two doors again. The wash bay, that is to, that's the point to have somebody come in. that's the point to have somebody come in and sandblast that and get the right paint on that. It's peeling and needs to be updated there. So a lot of that's just building maintenance. That cost came in lower than what we have it in here, but time to get it done, we don't know what their schedule are. That may increase some, so we just, we left it where it's at. Um, so there'll be two more doors going in here shortly this year and then we have, it's just getting the stuff replaced that's um, needs to be done since it was built. So that's the building and maintenance. The office equipment decreased and I believe that was computers last year. Um, I think there's a couple maybe this year coming. No, let's see, hold on. Office 365, they already had, yeah, so $6,000 last we had in desktop and that, and a printer in there, so we don't have either one of those. So that's where that decrease is at. Travel and training, um, that one, uh, a couple of the mechanics will go to the training for the Elgin sweepers and then some miscellaneous classes as they come available. Some of them, uh, Scott can get them signed up online and some of them you need to travel to. Uh, the snow conference, uh, keep guys going there and rotate that around, uh, just like we do in the streets. The rest of that one is the insurance in that is 53% down. Yeah, I just and I think for the Capitol Leon's, this one is some software, I think, uh, a scanner for, so we can read on diesel, uh, diesel trucks with a death problem. So it's a pusher, we ordered uh, two or three pushers for the loaders when I first started and then we have one that doesn't have one. And so now with having four mechanics again and Scott will um, would like to get that one updated. The diagnostic software, um, that's so we can read these diesel trucks and stuff that right now we have to send out to have that uh, done. And then um, we have a scissor left. It'd be nice to get a trailer. We can haul that on so all departments can use that. Just has to be a unique trailer in order to get that to go up. It can't be very much of a uh, incline on that to get it on there. So, but overall this budget decrease is then the 1.62%.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
I just, I do have one quick question, sorry. Uh, did, did you get rid of a building or something that you're no longer using? I just noticed the insurance is like $2,000 less on the building side of things.
You don't lie? I don't. Insurance stuff, I have no idea.
Got rid of a building?
I'm just looking at page 64 of the.
Page 64, what section?
And I just noticed that the insurance is quite a bit less.
Which one is under?
Uh, item 60, sorry.
Sixty. This one. That's off all of, that was off art streets too. I don't know the additional property. It went down, but then we also, that 12,288, it wasn't on the street budget this year either, so I don't know what that.
I'm not sure. I can look into it.
Okay. It's, it's just unusual.
It's a good thing though, usually.
Well, it's not, it's not a reality.
Uh, alright. Other questions?
I know this was off of, it's off this one too.
Um. Is it a, do you know where we got rid of some vehicles or equipment?
Well, let's see, it's off this one too. Or this one, let's see, hold on.
12 to 23.
No, it went up on this one. There's one I thought that.
I don't know. 75.
Unless it got missed, but.
Looking to it.
Any other questions? Okay, if none, do I hear a motion to move forward the recommendation?
I would make a motion to approve the fleet services as provided.
Second.
Motion second. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll keep plugging along here. I think after the housing budget, let's take a five to 10 minute break and then finish out the rest. But for now, let's hear the housing budget recommendation from Gary, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for your support of the housing division over the years. Um, just want to bring you a little bit up to date on our staff. It's the same staff we've had for last five years, four years I should say. Um, but we did pick up a couple of new projects, tax credit projects that we have managed. As Sheila mentioned earlier in her presentation, that's additional revenue that goes back to the city to offset some of our wages. And we also have taken the responsibility of the land bank also. So we currently assist 225 low to moderate income families with section eight. We have five tax credit projects. Uh, we've applied for owner occupied grant to help load them out of people, help with their rehab on houses. And we did apply for million dollar home ARP grant for a homeless project and we do have an interview July 16th to pitch that project to the DED. Uh, so we'll go back to our pages here. Our wages are up a bit there, you'll see that. Our operating and supplies, the vehicle fuel has gone up due to the fact we are, have picked up two new properties. One on the north end of town, one on the south end of town, so we'll have additional mileage going back and forth for those. Um, and then we get down into our other operating. We're into our new building, so a lot of our estimates and guestimates from last year have been realized that we maybe have been high on some of those, so. Garbage fees and snow removal, we have reductions in those area, which is good even after heavy snows last year. So we saw a reduction there. Our utility allowances are down because we were estimating high last year, not in, knowing what we would be finding. So our office equipment is higher at this time around dramatically because of copy paper. We're going bigger into copy paper because we have another 182 tenants files that we have to complete and keep track of. So copy paper did go up there, more projects. Um, legislative affairs, training uh, is up a bit basically because we're going to Western Nebraska this year for training as opposed to being in central Nebraska, so there's some increases there. Uh, we do have office, back to the office. We did um, get a new copier, leased copier. We're gonna do that. As Brad has recommended, we go into the lease project and the one he recommended, so. Postage is down and that's mainly because it's being offset by the other five entities. Each one of them are paying postage out of theirs. So um, that's about where we're at there and I'd answer any questions that you would have.
I guess just a minor one. You talked about the copy paper and the increase. Do you, do you need it on paper and filed that way or why can't it be just kept electronically?
Um, I'll be cautious. Um, a lot of the people that we're working with that, you know, we have to file, they have to fill out the paperwork every year. They have an annual paperwork that gets filed out, turned in and brought back. So there is a lot of paperwork. It would be great to be able to scan and keep it in, but you still need to go back and check their paperwork with it hands on is the disadvantage of that.
Okay, thanks.
Gary, um, I don't see it necessarily addressed in here, but I know it could become a discussion point and that's the land bank found, uh, formation foundation and uh, ongoing funding. Do you want to talk about that at all and where that's at and how that fact, how that potentially factors in?
Yes, I would. Um, the land bank has been handled under our housing by, between myself, Julia's secretary, working with other staff. Um, we appreciate the fact that the city contributed the initial 50,000 and then the profit off of the Northdale lot. So we had 80 some thousand to operate off of, 88, 5, 653. We are currently in the account balance reads as of June 24th was 84,422, 29. So as we stand today, last Tuesday, we received our first property. Was a donation that we received. We owned the property. We now have to tear it down. We did discover that it has asbestos, so that was a $6,000 kind of surprise for it. So we're anticipating that tear down to be $25,000, which will be coming in August. We have two other property owners who want to enter into the same type of agreement with us neck, this month. So we'd be looking at two more properties to be tore down August or September. So we'd be expending 75,000 approximately over the next three, three months, two to three months, which would then take us down to small dollars. We also have four people that we're working with through Bell's department for red tag houses to come down. And they also are wanting to participate in this somehow to assist to get those taken down. And the purpose of this is we went through this was for us to tear them down and then go back with low to moderate income housing, which is a low part in the city right now. So the goal is to go back and put houses on there for low to moderate income. Not to sell the lots to be built rentals on, but just to get houses put back on. So we're working in that process right now, how we would do that, whether it would be getting a floor plan that people could build off of. We would pick the plan, they could bring a plan. We're in that, that stage right now. So right now, if this all goes through in July, we'll be out of funds probably August or September. So the land bank did at their meeting last Monday, ask in a letter form, we have for a request for 50,000 more additional dollars. The other part of this thing is my responsibility would be to go out to lenders, corporations, organizations and solicit funds. Once we show some good success that we've had, I think we'll be better off to get it, some of them to buy in. Once we can show what we've done, house down and a new house going on it. And we have a meeting um, July 2nd, third week of July with Jeff Hakarot to go over how this tax does all work with the county. So we've got that all lined up to be on task with them.
Okay.
And Danny and Lyle have been helping a lot, Bell have. We've been doing a lot that we can to get this done. I think in six months, we've accomplished quite a bit.
Yeah, I, I agree and I commend all that work. It's uh, it's been very significant and I think we'll be, we'll lead to good outcomes in the community. I just wanted to have that discussion now, um, in case in the future that request needs to come forward to the council that it's, there, there's some um, foreshadowing, I guess, in some foundation language. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the request, the request is out there. Um, originally we had contemplated asking for council priority dollars. Um, this year we're looking for $50,000. We're hoping, I mean, we don't contemplate it'll ever get, ever get higher than that. Um, as we continue on, we want to do some grant, some grant work, but that process takes time to finalize our 501(c)(3) status. So the land bank is a completely separate budget from the housing division. Um, we're just lucky that we have great housing staff that's doing a lot of the work. Um, but ultimately the land bank is seeking $50,000 from the city council this year.
The original funding, as you mentioned, 50,000 came from ARPA funds.
Correct.
CARES Act, okay.
CARES Act. And then the Northdale lot was the last three.
Correct. I got a question too on the, on the housing, but how much of your budget is self-funded versus how much you request from the city? First, you know what I'm saying? Cause you've got income coming in off different projects.
Our, our wages come, we're staffed, city employed.
Yep.
And then the percentage of our, we pay back roughly 25% back in management fees to the city.
Okay.
From the five projects that we manage.
So the 677 of the overall request, of your request for budget, 25% of that comes back?
Eventually comes back to the general budget.
Okay.
I think that's how you transferred into your general, correct? Yep.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
How do you um, sales from the Kensington building factor and to all the centers? Is there any connection in terms of uh, potential funding for land bank or is that, is that completely separate?
It's, it's uh, Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Corp. has the funds for the housing sale of the Kensington. They have um, 750,000 in accounts. We have uh, 500,000 is committed to the homeless grant if that comes through as we're working with DED on it. Um, so then we would have 500,000 of that we would put in. The other anticipation we've discussed with the land, with the housing agency is that we would take potentially the 500, some of the 500,000. We would like to maybe talk to the land bank. We could then take that money, take 200 and go build a house. Sell it to a low to moderate income person. That closes, that money comes back. You could do it again somewhere else, so that money would stay helping to build the homes as you go through it. A no interest because it is money we have right now. It's something we're looking at. But it's just been discussion stage for the, for them at that stage.
And if that comes to fruition, that'd be a revolving account then and hopefully build back on itself, correct?
Correct. You know, and they, I heard today that lumber costs went down, so.
They did.
They did. So maybe we can get back to that 180's building like we were doing before.
Okay. Any, any questions for Gary or Danny regarding housing budget and or the land bank situation?
Yeah, good luck.
If not, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the housing budget? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to move the recommendation forward then?
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, housing budget.
Second.
Motion second. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, uh, so what we have left is items 10 through 14, the CDVG budget, planning and development, library budget, fire budget and region 11. Let's take a, let's say a five minute break and be. Okay, welcome back. We'll come back to item number 10, recommendation of the community development block grant budget. And to hear that recommendation, Sheila Rios, Sheila.
There's not a lot of activity in this budget this year. Um, housing has been working on spending down program income. So the beginning fund balance of about 128,000 is a decrease of almost 10,000. We were awarded a downtown revitalization grant for 435,000. Um, this funds the facade improvement program and we're actually currently accepting applications for this program until July 19th. And the downtown revitalization grant also funds infrastructure improvements. So these are improvements to the mid-block crossings downtown to make them ADA accessible.
Nice.
And then there's also 35,000 budgeted for the downtown revitalization grant for administration. Another grant is the owner occupied rehab grant for 498,000. We applied for that. We don't know yet if we were awarded. 80,000 is for administration of the grant and the rest goes for rehabilitation. And then um, also included in the budget is 400,000 of grant income and expense in case we decide to apply for another grant during the year. And those are the only grants that we have budgeted. Uh, we're also budgeting to spend 151,900 of program income that's available. And so our ending fund balance is zero in this fund. So that is all that's in the CDVG budget pretty short and sweet.
Sheila, I guess I just have one question. Does the downtown revitalization, revitalization grant have a one-to-one match?
It has a one-to-one match, as far as the facade improvement, um, and the property owners, they, it, it provides that match. And then I know in the CHAF budget, there, I think there's like about twenty-two, twenty-five thousand, that's the match for the mid-block crossings.
Okay, thank you.
Remind us what cycle we're in, or is, has there been a, another application made regarding CB, CDVG recently, or any time planned in the near future?
Not that I know of. Are you aware of anything else that's being planned?
Yeah, right now, we're contemplating the potential for a CDVG public works grant, if we could fit it to any of our current projects and use the existing funding that Steve has for match right now, but, um, we do not have that aligned with a particular project right now.
Okay, thank you. Right, any other questions on the CDVG budget? Our discussion. Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion for recommendation?
Make a motion to approve the community development block grant budget.
Second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item eleven, recommendation of the planning and development budget, and for this, we'll hear from city planner, Pal Grimes.
Thank you, mayor and council. Budget this year is looking a little different, as you can see, from the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, mainly because, uh, we have included the code compliance official from fire into our budget now, so they have moved into our, um, our department. And so that was kind of the big thing as to why essentially my, uh, percent increase were all increases. Uh, some of the big ones that you can see is, uh, number forty-six, building and ground maintenance. That was a twenty-six hundred percent increase. That is because we went from a thousand dollars to twenty-seven thousand, and that is because of property condemnation potentials. And the other big one is the nuisance mitigation that came into number sixty-eight. So that is almost a hundred and fifty-two percent increase there, because ten thousand came over for the nuisance mitigation. Then, um, also, I guess I should go back a little bit on the staffing. We did save from last budget to this budget, what, about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars? Because instead of two admin assistants, we combined into one, and so that is where we took out the permits tech and the planning commission, development assistant into one. And so we saved thirty-six thousand dollars, just by combining those two. So that helped offset a little bit, and the other big thing is a request for under eighty-four, the asset management. We have started the asset management system, and we are working with Steve and the Elements, um, people to get that. It came in higher, once they actually gave us a, an actual, um, quote for this part of it. So there's the asset management, and then there's our part that has all of the contractor engagement, the public engagement permits. So that's what we're in right now, trying to get, um, the, the permits all online. So I think once we get this done, it'll be much more efficient for staff and for contractors and citizens to engage through that system. We're just, it came in higher than expected, I think, from when they were first talking to us. So there is that request in there for this year, and then if we don't have to spend all of that, I won't. This is just kind of their estimated expenditure to get this done, and we are working through that with them right now, as to how can we maybe combine some permits together to lower the cost, that sort of thing. So we, I am trying to get the cost of that as low as possible, but still function well for contractors, citizens and staff. If there are any questions.
So with streamlining these permits, um, will it, will there be some guidance on which permit you're actually needing? And some of them are kind of close, but this one, when you go online and they'll, you'll explain what you need, and then it'll, or you'll tell what you need, and then you, then you'll be able to fill the right permit out then?
Yeah, we're actually trying to split up the building permit, because that's the one that's most confusing for people.
Right.
Because we have one building permit that goes anywhere from a deck and a fence all the way to a new industrial build on the same thing. So that's what we're working with now, is to get some of those simpler things, particularly that maybe homeowners may do themselves, like a fence or a deck, and it's just a fence permit at that point, and just a deck permit. So it's, it's much simpler for them to understand, not as much information of saying, you don't need that, you don't need that, you just need to fill out this, like we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, demolition fund is housed within your budget, is that correct?
Yes, that came over from fire into ours with the code compliance official.
So, um, can you talk about the, we talked about land bank a little bit before with housing, can you talk about the linkages there with land, with land bank helping potentially lower the costs, or lower the strain and pressure out of that fund for planning now? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, so we kept that in there because people have that, um, offering now of the land bank to donate it. And so we are telling everyone their options, when we do say, this is collapsing in, the foundation's collapsing, it's, it's a demo at this point in time. And so these funds are the ones where we've used before that people just don't do it themselves. We've tried, usually it takes a year or two, you know, to, to get to this point, where we expend the funds, um, as a city, and then put a lean back on there to see if we can get any of those funds back. But now that that option of a land bank is out there, there is that in, as a backup, if we absolutely have to. And then with the land bank, we're saying, well, you can do it yourself, or here's this option, if you want to donate this to them, and then we don't have to expend those funds that way, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the planning and development budget? Other comments or input? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to forward recommendation of the planning and development budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed plan for planning and development. Second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twelve, we'll now hear a recommendation of the library budget. From our library director, Jessica Chamberlain, Jessica.
Hello, I'm mayor and council. Um, our budget is a little, pretty straightforward, uh, very similar to last year. Uh, we're not moving any staff around, so our staffing situation is very stable. Um, our library materials, just in, uh, a slight increase for inflation there, garbage fees and utilities and things, just reflecting actual costs of those services. Um, a slight increase in our building ground and plant maintenance, uh, we've had some issues with our fire alarm this year, so just budgeting for some ongoing repairs there. Um, our public relations going up just a little bit, we have some strategic planning to do next year, so budgeting some funds to help us have facilitated conversations there. Um, travel and training, uh, the amount of travel and training is stable, but, um, costs for travel and things are going up, so you see that reflected there. Um, other items of note, um, postage fees, um, are going up, and so that's reflected there. Uh, the big increase in our computer service is a difference in how Microsoft Office is handling, um, their fees. We have, um, several pub, um, all of our public computers have the Office software suite, and we used to be able to buy that one time and install it on all the computers. Uh, now we have to purchase the subscription-based model that they're going to, so that should cover us, that increase of about thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, but that will cover us for five years on all of those public computers. So that's a once-in-five-years expense there. Um, and then we have some funds budgeted in our capital, uh, funding to do some improvements to the children's area. It's getting a lot of use and a lot of play, which is wonderful, but that means some of those equipment and things are just wearing out. They're getting, we've cleaned them as much as we can clean them, and it's time to replace them. So, uh, we have applied for a grant that would cover at least half of that, uh, so hopefully we would not be expending, uh, more than twelve thousand dollars of that budget at twenty-four. Any questions?
Jessica, how much revenue do you guys generate every year?
Uh, not very much. The last time that we checked was several years ago, and it was around twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars, and that would cover overdue fines, um, copy fees, uh, damaged, or, you know, costs for replacement of damaged or, or lost materials. So I want to say it's around that, but I would look to our finance folks.
Just out of curiosity, so out of those, um, funds that, how much of those do you spend on lost or non-return books?
Out of the twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
It's about twelve thou, about half of that is recouping costs for people lost the book, and so they pay for it. So about twelve thousand dollars a year is, of that revenue is people paying for materials that they either lost or damaged.
And how much do you think we collect on the fines?
So it'd be about the other, well, I'm not sure, because the rest of the remainder of the twelve, thirteen thousand is copy fees, printing fees, um, and, and fines combined. So I don't have a breakout of what would be fines versus the, like the, what we do from printing.
You know, I, I, I read a study on library materials and fines associated with them, and that study found that if you did not charge a fine for the late fees on the books, that you would actually be further ahead, because you would get the material back, because people are afraid of paying the fines, so they won't bring the material back. It was just an interesting study that I had read, that with no fines, you would actually save money.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point, and there have been lots of libraries experimenting with that in the last couple of years, because you spend so much staff time recouping, you know, what's ten, twenty cents at a time, uh, is it worth it? So it's definitely something we've talked about with our library board, to see if they would want to try that, uh, moving forward. Mm-hmm.
I've got a question for you, um, looks like, uh, so you've had a hundred and two thousand dollar increase budget, forty thousand, that's basically payroll, or personnel costs.
Yeah, yeah.
And so you've got sixty-two thousand roughly of overages. Uh, the bulk of that is coming from computer service.
Yeah.
Can you explain that?
Yep, that is that Microsoft Office, so we have, off the top of my head, thirty-plus public computers, and all of those have the Office Suite on them. In the past, we've been able to buy Office Suite when we buy a computer and install it, and we can use it forever. Now we have to buy licenses for each one, and that is a shift in their pricing model of how now they want to move everyone to subscription-based. So we had to buy licenses for all of those, and that will cover all of them for five years. So it won't be that much every year, uh, but it is certainly a chunk upfront. So that's thirty-one thousand dollars of that. And then the other twenty-four thousand is in capital improvements, for improvements to the children's play area. Um, but yeah, that's where most of the difference comes from.
So in the future, would it be best to maybe start budgeting prior to that, you know, when your license come due, would you?
Yeah, definitely. Um, I, this was a surprise to us this year.
Right, I understand that, I understand that.
So, yeah, and I think definitely we want to work with Brad on how he wants to see that work in the future. Do we want to go to paying every year, or how, yeah?
Sure.
Yeah, but we anticipate that when this license is over in five years, it's not even going to be an option in the future. It's going to be subscription-based, more than likely, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And to answer the question on how much library revenue, it looks like there's five hundred dollars in copier fees and twenty-three thousand library service charges, which I presume is where your fines and your lost books and all that kind of stuff goes.
Yep, yep. And that would, yeah, that would include printing charges too, though, I think, so. Yeah, we could certainly get a breakdown for you of what exactly each category is, if you would be interested in seeing that.
Just, just a general question, I'm, out of curiosity, so the, the partnership with Parks on the story walk was great, I think it was a very good outcome. See a lot of usage. Have, has that translated into higher usage at the library itself? Are families, uh, using that space and then coming into the library who might not have otherwise?
Anecdotally, I would say yes. It's always hard to know exactly why new families come in, but we have seen a lot of new families. And I think it's gone both ways, family coming into the library, then saying, oh, let's try out this new park, and then also families who come to the park and then say, oh, you know, I haven't been to the library in a really long time, but we're right here, and so then they come in and, and explore. So I think it's been a great partnership and a great outcome.
Either way, mission accomplished, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right, any other questions or discussion on library?
All right.
Thank you. Any further thoughts or comments? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to move forward recommendation of the library budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the library budget.
Second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirteen, recommendation of the fire budget. On this, we'll hear from fire chief Tim Rogge, chief.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I appreciate, uh, being given the opportunity to present to you today. Um, as we bring this report forward, happy to report that we are fully staffed, I'm grateful for that. We finished up last year, I think around fifty-seven calls ahead of the year before, and, and I was talking to Chief O'Brien before I came over, we're two hundred calls ahead of last year, just six months in. So, uh, I'm very grateful that we have the team we have in place, and that, uh, that we are full, so we're going to work hard to keep doing that. Uh, as far as the budget goes, we'll give kind of a brief once-over of some of the high points, highlights of this budget, and then kind of get into the weeds on some of the details. As Val previously mentioned, the code compliance official came over to planning and zoning along with that. Uh, the nuisance mitigation, property condemnation funds left our budget, went into Val's, as she described. We also had some things that'll transfer into Parks for the mosquito program, because that'll be run by Parks, so there's some mosquito vector training we've seen in years past, and then some chemicals, uh, that had been bought in years past that will get transferred out of ours as well. So from a personnel costs, uh, the code compliance off, official leaving is the biggest one. The other, uh, minor, uh, thing that we have there from a personnel standpoint is the assistant, uh, admin assistant and emergency management coordinator position previously held by Faith Peterson, who recently retired. Uh, we were able to hire Caitlin Palmer into that role. Uh, there was some classes that need to be had in the area of emergency management, so that that position could be ten percent funded by a grant. Um, we fully expect Caitlin to take those courses as necessary, but, uh, we're of the belief, from some recent information, that that ten percent contribution to that grant might be changing as far as the policy. It'll still support our emerg- It'll still support our emergency manager, who you'll be hearing from shortly, but we might not be eligible for that ten percent that we've been getting. So that's why you see, uh, the full position being accounted for out of fires budget, uh, in this coming year. Some of the other things, some big highlights that you'll see as we work through this, uh, accounts forty-eight and sixty-eight saw some large percentage changes that we'll get to, and that was moving some licensing type items out of account sixty-eight into forty-eight, uh, per guidance from our finance team, uh, just for accounting purposes. So we'll get through those here as we move through. So I believe you're each looking at enclosure thirteen, page ninety-six, uh, as the front page of our budget. Again, moving down through some of those percentages on the right-hand column. Nothing too major. We talked about the personnel costs and how those are affected by the code compliance move. Uh, this is, of course, figuring in the two-and-a-half percent COLA that's proposed, and then a three percent increase in health insurance, and then other various personnel costs. Twenty-nine, uh, we had a little decrease there in our EMS supplies because a couple of the bigger items we bought this year came out. And then moving down into forty-six, you'll see that forty-two percent drop, and that's largely in part because property condemnation came out of that account, and we replaced an overhead door this year. So those were two big items that created a bump there. Uh, and then in forty-eight, you'll see a ninety-eight percent increase. That is those licensing type of things coming out of professional fees and going into, uh, office equipment maintenance per accounting asking us to do so. Uh, bit of an increase in forty-nine, communication and equipment. Uh, as you've maybe heard, the, the area, the region, Madison County Fire Department's, Pierce County, and Stanton have all advanced forward in their counties and respective communities and villages with new radios that are on the statewide radio system. So they're going to have similar communications and capabilities to us. So now that they're all up and running, we need to go through and reprogram our radios to include their frequencies, because those frequencies did not exist when we originally got our radios. So as, there's a fee for each of those, and, and believe me, I'm trying to minimize that number as much as possible, but, uh, that's why you see an increase there, because we're trying to account for what it might cost to have all of our radios reprogrammed, so. Okay, getting into the actual budget itself would be page ninety-eight of enclosure thirteen. Personnel, one thing that might look a little different under, uh, just a couple lines down, under one part-time summer help, you'll see that that rate went from eighteen to thirty-two seventy-nine. Last year, or this current year, we use that for some of our full-time firefighters that wanted to help, uh, mosquito fogging, and we aren't seeing that much anymore, s, especially since that'll be transferred into parks. So that thirty-two seventy-nine is actually an hourly rate for Faith, who recently retired, should she have to come in and help with seasonal things that are first times for our new administrative assistant. Um, so we, we wanted to set up the ability to pay her hourly at the rate she d, she left at, in case she needs to come in and help. We don't anticipate having to exercise that too often, but wanted to make sure we accounted for it here. And then under the fire reserves, we went from eighteen dollars an hour to nineteen dollars an hour there. We use the basic starting pay for an entry-level full-time firefighter and try to keep our reserves hourly rate comparable to what that would be for our full-time firefighter, and I think they're right at eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents or something like that. So, uh, we haven't changed that in a few years, so we did this year. Uh, let's see. Nothing through, and I'm willing to answer any questions you might have. I'd be going over to page one hundred of enclosure thirteen next. I think it's pretty common for most of us, vehicle fuel and lube, the variables went up a little bit this year. We also increased our diesel consumption as far as gallonage from fifty-five hundred to six thousand, because with increased calls equals increased fuel consumption. Nothing wild and crazy as far as twenty-six and or twenty-nine. Uh, in forty-six, which is page one oh-two, I zeroed out, or you'll see zeroed out, some of the mos, mosquito control chemicals, um, and you would see our overhead door maintenance budget go down from seventeen thousand down to eighty-four hundred. It's because we ended up replacing one overhead door that couldn't wait until we had those in the CIP. So it's still a few years out, we needed to get one replaced, the rest will be in the CIP. Property condemnation also came out, as you'll see there. Forty-seven, which is machinery and vehicle maintenance. We have a skid steer attachment in there for snow removal at three thousand dollars, working with Nate Powell and Parks, uh, to potentially use their skid steer in the winter months, as opposed to having to get a payloader. It's going to be a little bit more forgiving in and around the fire stations. Uh, we could have that down in the station and take up less space, and, uh, hopefully both divisions could get use out of that push-plow attachment that they don't currently have. So that's why you see that in there. We do not own a skid steer, but we would be working with Parks and using theirs in the winter months, should they not need it. So we're hoping that partnership will work really well. Tower one platform breathing air supply, that's for our newest aerial. Uh, when we got that device, we were unsure how we wanted to connect the onboard air supply with the truck to the platform that our teams work out of. Finally had that figured out with our SCBA rep, so that's what you see there. Not cheap to do, but it's going to be an investment that'll allow our folks to work inside of that platform, hooked up to a hose rather than carrying a pack on their backs. Uh, let's see. Forty-nine, account forty-nine, which would be on page one oh-four. That's where our upgrade, radio programming, mobile and handhelds. We, that is if we pay per radio, uh, worst-case scenario. We're hopeful we can get that broke down to an hourly rate by having some of our team help facilitate that process. But we have probably around a hundred radios when you figure in our handhelds and our mobiles, so it doesn't take long for that to add up. Radio maintenance, within that's our state contract that all of us have for the most part throughout the city. Travel and training, which is over on page one oh-five, we increased our tuition reimbursement, as did other divisions, it's my understanding, up from fifteen hundred to two thousand, and expanded that process and policy that can be used for, um, student loan reimbursement or existing student loan reimbursement or new classes. The other trainings are trainings that we would normally have in there. Uh, I believe we're at right around, I think last year, right around seventy percent to seventy-five consumption of that. There was a conference that we weren't able to attend, but other than that, I think we're using things up for the most part there. Cellular charges, if you see that, these are little things that I kind of nerd out on a little bit, but we had to increase that. We use a lot of cellular data with our onboard devices for EMS reporting, so in response to that, we have to account for that in our budget. So that's why you see an increase there. Nuisance mitigation comes out of sixty-eight, as Val described. And the last place of mine is our capital outlay, or the last page that I have. Concrete tuck pointing, that's to, uh, improve some deteriorating components of our training tower, public safety training tower out there, and then we're using shipping containers or Connex containers to do live fire training in. You've seen activity out there and some containers getting stacked, that's our on-duty staff, um, working with street division and then the guard unit to help us get those set. Uh, bunk room remodel at fire station one, that is going to take what used to be widely accepted in the fire service as a wide-open living space and break it down into more privacy and compartmentalization for, uh, it's actually a very well-researched mental health study that, that these folks need to be able to go back to their bunk and living quarters and have some privacy. So, uh, that would be some contracting out and some labor from our staff to make that remodel happen. And then in machinery and equipment, uh, topper slide-out for one of our utility pickups, similar to what the fire marshal has, uh, so we can get some things, uh, protected in there for our command vehicle, for instant command. Replacement of an ice machine at station one, and one set of jaws of life, three tools. That would replace a set that was purchased in twenty-twelve, our first set of battery-powered tools, uh, that is, become obsolete. We get them PM'd every year, and they're running out of parts, they stopped making the parts that we need for that particular set. The other set that we have was bought in twenty-fifteen, but it's the next generation of Hearst Tools, so it should be supported for a little while longer. If I would take any questions you might have.
Chief, on those radio upgrades, is there any way to get reimbursed through some of that, through some of them other towns?
As far as the reprogramming? They had to do the, the only thing is they had to do the same thing on their end to get our channels put in their radios. So, um, I believe, and the last two upgrades that we did, we didn't pay for, because, uh, the state had to come up with an update, a mandatory update that they required, that they had to touch every single radio. So we were able to get some of these programmings done within that, we just haven't had one of those in the last year or two. So I'm not sure about a way to get reimbursed, because the county bought those radios, uh, Madison County, Stanton County, and Pierce through different funding mechanisms. So we'll absolutely try anything, but we knew we had to get those radios done, which is why we put it in the budget this year, so.
Thank you.
Chief, that, um, the account on tuition assistance that was increased a little bit, I think that's good. Has that been utilized much over recent years for, either for tu, tuition assistance or for training, um, uh, class costs?
Yes, we actually have quite a few of our team that take online classes that are using tuition assistance. Some are pursuing bachelors in fire service or emergency management. We had quite a few have gotten bachelor from Columbia Southern in the fire service area. Uh, but yeah, I expect us to, to use that and then some. We'll probably have to draw names out of the hat to see who's going to use it on.
Yeah, that's good. I'm glad to see it was able to be increased a little bit, I think that's important.
On average, it's about between five and ten employees per year. The bulk of them, almost all of them are coming from fire, or police, public safety generally, but fire absorbs most of them. So it does get used.
That's good. Thanks, Val.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Comments or further discussion? Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion to move forward recommendation of the fire budget?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, last but not least, for today, item fourteen, recommendation of the regional eleven emergency management budget. From our very own Bobby Reiser, Bobby.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, uh, for those of you that don't know, regional eleven, um, includes Antelope, Madison, and Pierce County with the city of Norfolk. Uh, city Norfolk pays for the lion's share of my budget at forty percent. The other three counties share the sixty percent at roughly seventeen to twenty-three percent each. So I also have a grant, it's called AMPG, it's Emergency Management Procurement Grant, that, that traditionally has paid for half of my salary and benefits, when it first was given out years ago. In the years that have happened, it has decreased considerably to the point where they're talking this year, it will only be funding around twenty-eight to thirty percent of my budget and, of my wages and benefits. So that's where on enclosure fourteen, page one-ten, talks about miscellaneous federal grants, so it goes from fifty thousand to forty thousand. Irv Portis, who is the head of NEMA, ha, has come down and said the federal government has said they're going to decrease this grant ten percent. So we kind of went a little bit higher there, because also, as Tim had mentioned, Chief Tim had mentioned, I lost Faith Peterson, she retired, so that would be her ten percent of her wages added back into that as well, since we don't get to use her wages in that grant anymore. So, um, we can go to enclosure fourteen, page one-twelve, uh, account number twenty-nine. Last year we had a hundred thousand in that, this year we don't have anything in that. So what I do with this percentage is on odd, on odd years, for example, la, last year, twenty-twenty-three, we did a mini-grant through regional eleven, and that roughly is about a hundred thousand dollars. So those, uh, percentages of the city paying forty percent and the other three counties paying approximately twenty percent, uh, the excess that I get back from my AMPG grant gets put to the side, and on the odd years, it's called a mini-grant, and those, that funding, that excess funding gets, uh, used for the first responders throughout all three counties and the city of Norfolk, at their percentages respectively. So out of that hundred thousand dollars, forty, forty percent of it goes to the city, it comes back to the city of Norfolk. So we offered that last year, so that's why it was a hundred thousand, and next year we won't be offering it, so that's where that goes. So if you go to enclosure fourteen, page one-thirteen, total expenditures, my budget went down approximately a hundred thousand dollars, and that's, that's pretty much why. So... We don't have a lot more changes in there. Um, on page one-fifteen of enclosure fourteen, we've got, we went up a little bit on vehic, vehicular fuel and lube. Of course, everything's getting more expensive. And that's about all I have. Anybody have any questions? I do have one thing for you. I offered this to, um, my three county commissioners' boards, and I thought I'd maybe throw this at you two to chew on a little bit. Uh, I am doing a tabletop exercise for actor shooter for Antelope County after the first of the year. Pierce County wants it as well, and I'm going to offer it to Madison County when I go next month. So no decisions, no motions or anything right now, but I just thought I'd throw that out there now, maybe we would want to do it for you guys, too, so. I have little army men, and I have little police cars and ambulances, so we have a lot of fun, we laugh a lot, but we learn, too.
That's a good thought. Thank you, Bobby. Any questions regarding the emergency management budget? Okay, thank you, Bobby. Further comments or discussion? Okay. Hearing done, I'd look forward, uh, motion to move forward the regional eleven emergency management budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the regional eleven emergency management budget, second.
Motion second, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the first half of the Norfolk City Council Budget Review Sessions. The next half will be July eighth, next Monday, July eighth. If you enjoyed yourself here this afternoon, don't go far, we have a city...